Oh, wait a minute. Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Does it go on right for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mr. Jerick.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Aldison.
Here.
Mrs. Scott, here. Mrs. Strobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
All right.
Okay, um, thank you. Time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam President. First item I'd like to share with the board is, had the opportunity on Friday, this time of year is the selection of scholarships with our high school graduating seniors. And each year, I give out the superintendent scholarship, which are $10,000, $1,000 scholarships. And as is the case typically with every year, always get outstanding applicants. Makes it very difficult to make a selection, but it's a nice problem to have. So, you know, with that being said, having to read the applications multiple times over and over again to make a, a selection. Unfortunately, there are some that are left out of the scholarship race, but, you know, it's just, it's, it's a humbling experience because it just, it kind of reminds me of the great students who we have in our Blazer Learning Community, which is a representation of our outstanding families and our awesome community. The second item is a informational, we did have some grounds RFP bids that we opened. They were submitted today. We opened them, and we will have further conversations with the cabinet if we take a look at those in more detail, and we will have some additional information for Facilities and Transportation Committee scheduled for the 8th of May. The final item is we continue to secure professional staff for the open positions that we have for next school year. We're excited to, many of our positions have been filled, with a few remaining, and we are excited with the talent level that will be joining our Blazer Learning Community team. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to procedures for public participation. Any prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board's president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You will be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any time that is, any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Before we do presentations by the public on agenda items, I would like, we have two agenda edits, and I'd like to get them voted on, adding that, them to the agenda before we have public, per public comment on agenda items. So, one agenda edit is for 4A122, which is for Hannah Edwards. It is changing her resignation date, which was on the committee of the whole agenda, as April 29th, 2022, and I'd like to, we'd like to change it to May 2nd, 2022. Do I have a motion to make that change to the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second, a second from Ms. Godfrey? Any conversation before we vote? Can I get a vote on that, Mr. Scott?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jerick, yes. Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
And then I have a second item for, to add to the agenda. We would be adding, if we vote, vote to add it, we would be adding it to 5.A6 under added, finance added consent items. This would be a motion to approve the purchase of items for the cafeteria services. One heated display merchandiser for $4,555.65, two buffet warmers for $4,620, and 240 trays for $1,515.20, for a total of $10,690.85. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion?
I just wanted to note that the reason for this agenda edit is new information came through the board's attention through the committee process.
Oh, okay. Yep, sorry about that. Yeah, this, um, we can discuss it more in detail when we get to that item in the, in the agenda, but this, since, since our last meeting two weeks ago, we have received these quotes. We've received the information that this info, this, this stuff needs to be ordered soon, before the end of the school year, before May 1, actually, which is five days from now, six days. And, and it was approved out of the Finance Committee meeting, which happened at 7:05 tonight. So, it's having that, are you okay with that motion? The, you're, you're okay with that motion? Do we have a second?
I certainly.
And Ms. Bell, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Amendation?
Is it a replacement or just new items that need? I'm just curious.
The trays are replacements. The buffet and the other two items are new items. And we can discuss it a little bit more in detail when we get to that agenda item, if you'd like. They, um, but they, we did go through the bid process. We got three bids for all three, or three quotes, I'm sorry. Can we get a vote? Oh, if nobody else has any questions, can we vote to put it on the agenda, Mr.?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jerick.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, and just to complete, round out announcements, there will be an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss negotiations. Having said all of that, let's hop back to presentations by the public on agenda items. Do we have anybody who'd like to make presentations? Okay, seeing none, moving on to three consent items. Do I have a motion for 3.A1 through many, 16?
Motion.
Ms. Bell, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jerick, any discussion on any of the consent items? Okay, can we get a vote?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jerick.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to personnel consent items, 4.A1 through 3, as amended. Do I have a motion for those? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jerick, any comments, questions, concerns from the board before we vote? Mr. Scott?
Yes, Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Jerick.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to finance added consent items, 5.A1 through 6, as amended. Do I get a motion for those?
Motion.
Ms. Godfrey, do I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Jerick, just to comment, under number 6 that we, that we added on, we, the business office did get three quotes for, for the items that they're asking for us to approve money to purchase. The trays, the lowest, the lowest bid was from the restaurant store, the buffet warmers, and the heated display merchandiser are from Singer. That was, they were, they were all low bid, the lowest bid, or lowest quote. The issue is if we do not get a purchase order in by May 1st, they can't guarantee the price, which is not, a lot of times when we get quotes, you know, they'll, they'll give us 30 days, and even if we don't act in 30 days, they will often honor the price even longer than that, but they're telling us that, no, we will not do that this time. Any other questions about that, or any questions about anything else?
I mean, we need them when we're gonna buy, if things be monitored, like, you know, is there a shortage going on? I mean, it's like, it's like a car, you have a chip issue going on, I mean, we're talking about warming trays. I don't know. I, I don't have a point of reference, it's just one of those.
Yeah.
Do we need them, like, for the next month, you know, for something coming up that we need them for, or?
It, they were identified as things that we could, right now, at the high school, what they do is, those buffet warmers, there, there are, there is nothing that's, there is nothing that sits in there. We just take two, we just take two of the regular trays and just, like, cover that space, and one, like, knock from a kid, the whole thing goes down, and we lose a lot of, lose a lot of stuff like that. Any, any other questions about anything else under the added consent items? I think it all came out of committee. No questions, then. Can we get a vote?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jerick.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to personnel added consent. We got 6A1 through 3. Can I get a, can I get a motion for those?
Motion.
Uh, Ms. Bell, second for Mr. Strobel. Comments, questions, concerns, before we vote? Mr. Scott, sorry.
Yeah, Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jerick.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And then Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to old business, 7A1 and 2, the meeting minutes from the last meeting, April 11th. Do I have a motion for those?
Motion.
Ms. Albright, second. Mr. Strobel. Comments, questions, concerns? Can we vote?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Shocker. Mrs. Bell, not that you're rowing, I just, it's your first. Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
I don't know what I'm saying. Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
I'm in trouble. Mr. Jerick.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Aldison.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so we got nothing listed in new business. It's time for presentations by the public on issues. Let me just remind everybody, you're free to say what you want to say, got three minutes. It's not a Q and A session. If you've got, if there's something that you ask us to look into, to answer for you, we'll try to get an answer back to you directly, or in the, under the superintendent's notes from this meeting within the week. So, having said that, any presentations by the public on any issues? And seeing none, no?
Hello.
Hi!
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is DJ Jean. I'm an 11th grade straight D student. I am truant. I'm often outspoken, sometimes disrespectfully. I'm a violator, though not frequently, of the dress code. I'm a terrible test taker, and I'm almost incapable of paying attention. I probably have more absences than half of the students here combined. I am heartily ill physically and mentally. I struggle with severe PTSD and bipolar depression amongst other diagnoses. I have an neurological disorder that severely impairs my function in stressful situations. I'm also a member of all three choirs at Danny Boone High School, including the audition group for our students. I'm a member and captain of the color guard and marching band, color guard. I'm a member of the student government, and I'm a theater company member. I have auditioned and dated into junior county choir, district choir, and region choir. Outside of what you notice when you look at my records, I love animals. I work in a music venue, and I'm a performing artist who has recorded and released music. I'm totally scared of the dark, and I'm pretty much allergic to everything. Now that you know me a little better, I'd like to talk about school. School has always been an escape for me. Home is never safe. I'm also an abused victim and a victim of negligence. Coming to school gave me an outlet to be safe and feel good. Unfortunately, when you experience harmful things at school, the amount of health effects travel with you to school. Your illness comes with you to school, and you can't control it. You have to learn to cope. Sometimes you can't, and sometimes you're just not there yet. Today, I witnessed a student have a breakdown because they were panicked at the thought of going back into a classroom in which they felt unsafe. I also witnessed that students could set back to class while they were in tears, to the point of also hyper, almost hyperventilating. They were not offered a few minutes to gather themselves before returning to the classroom. Probably after the student was just out of sight, a call was sent to the teacher, imploring them to write them, write them up if they do not return straight to class. I've seen this situation in different formats, probably genuinely 100 times. I've also had my fair share of negative experiences while searching for support as well. I have also been able to recognize signs of strong anxiety and discomfort in our staff, especially after witnessing traumatic or disheartening events, after getting bad news about students, like fights, drug use, sabotage, and even death or hospitalization of their students. I'd like to work with the board and administration, as well as the students and staff, on creating a safe space where people can go to calm down or process things that might happen in their lives. Personally, to have a space like this to decompress would help me drastically, and I believe it would help many of my peers as well. Many people may not have the resources to seek out therapy or a safe environment in which they can process things, so it's important that we provide that to them. Please do not think of this as a way to skip class. That is an issue that we are having now. Students are not looking, having crises to skip class, and they're not looking for support just to skip class. Even if they are, maybe we should look a little longer, further into why they cannot be in class. No, we're not a counseling building, nor are we licensed therapists, but we do not need to be in order to create a safe space. A safe space could include a quiet area to decompress. Yeah, that's, that's the red, that's the red thing that happens sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I hope you all know me. I'm Danny Haw, and I'm a senior at Danny Boone High School. So, continuing off what DJ was talking about, a safe space could or would include a quiet area, a quiet area to spend a few minutes decompressing, an adult to supervise, sensory objects to help students dealing with under stimulation, as well as the option to have little to no stimulation. Pampers are handouts of mental health, abuse, pregnancy, and addiction resources. Information about the soon-to-be caring closet, where students can be directed to they need physical resources, and more. I can tell you that if we do this, there will be people that would appreciate this more than anything. It is proven that the United States is dealing with serious mental health crisis in schools. Let's do our part to support the students and adults who need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Kriana Lee, and I'm a senior at Danny Boone Area High School. I'm here tonight again to continue speaking about racial discrimination in our school district, and how we can move forward to create a better Blazer community. The school district needs to empower students in our school district to speak up. It is really important that students find the courage and passion to speak up for what they care about. It is also important that the adults are listening to the students when they have something to say. There is a cycle of hopelessness that keeps happening in our school district, where students feel like they aren't being heard, and we cannot leave students behind at all costs. Blazer students deserve affirming and safe school environments that celebrate them for who they truly are. The Blazer community needs to focus on developing an affirming and equitable school climate for students of color, so that these students can thrive instead of suffer. In addition, our school district needs to commit themselves to teaching accurate historical information, and ensure that students understand how racism functions, so that they can develop the skills needed to support anti-racist behaviors. In addition, I would like to demand that Danny Boone Area School District, they need to invest in anti-racist education and developing comprehensive equity policies to ensure that students can succeed. The school district also needs to make sure that responses to incidents of hate address the system's school climate as a whole. Now is not the time to stay silent on the racial discrimination that is happening in our school district. We have to encourage others to speak up and contribute to the conversation of anti-racism in our school district. We need to actively confront discrimination when we see it and when, when we hear it. We also need to act now to prevent racial discrimination for students in our school district. We have to set a precedent for younger students and allow them to grow up in a school culture that includes everyone. We need to be more transparent in our conversation, and to make sure to include all stakeholders when moving forward with change. We have to put in the work and hold difficult conversations to provide a better future for students at our Danny Boone Area School District. Right now, if you have students here that are demanding for more of a safe space, and if they want to be heard, please listen to their demands, and so many more students, because they know what they're talking about, and they know what they want, and what's best for our school community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Aldison.
When, when everybody comes up, I just want to let you know, you know, I am trying to take notes, so if you spend more time looking at the top of my head than at my, at my face, it's because I'm just, I'm not, I am paying attention, I'm just trying to write notes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jimmy from Amity, but you should know that. Within talking about, I guess, inclusion, okay, I'll ask some questions. I was asking before, you can just write it down, these are questions that I ask myself. I always ask questions, and I know this isn't a Q and A, but I'm gonna ask questions, just thinking about it. I was going through the, a lot of the newsletters from the equity and inclusion, or whatever you want to call it, newsletters, and I started back, I guess, let's say June, okay, going all the way up until now. I'm gonna talk about some heritage months that people celebrate, okay? September, October, Spanish Heritage Month, okay? I think I see, September, October, you go either way. I think it goes from September, May, September, then October. October is also Italian-American Heritage Month. It's also Disability Employment Heritage Month. November, Native American Heritage Month, okay? It's also, or November is American Indian, I'm sorry, American, it's Indian Heritage Month. I have to plug it down, I'm sorry. January is, it's not, it's not fully December, January. February is Black History Month or African-American History Month. March is Women's History Month or Irish-American History Month. These, April 13th, April, I'm sorry, March 13th, April 15th is Death, where this month, and May, Asian Pacific American Heritage or Jewish American Heritage Month, May, and then June is the LGBTQ. How many of these things have been noticed on the Daniel Boone Newsletter? There's three. Does anyone know if we are? Anyone know? Okay. LGBT, June, is now, Black History is now, and Women's Heritage is also now. That's three. So what happened to the other one? There's no other ones. I'm gonna read a definition of WACE, a group of persons related by common descent or heritage. So people talk about things being racist, and I always say not including people is racist, so what happens to Spanish heritage being filtered out to the community, or Indian-American history, or Native American history, Italian-Irish, it's gonna go on and on. But we're gonna include people, for everybody, it should be everybody, race, again, ethnicity, that's how it should be. So we're gonna be talking about inclusive and racism, not including certain races, so by not including American or any of these, could be considered racist. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that Jewish American Heritage Month.
Oh, yeah, I apologize, please. I was writing, I'm sorry, I guess I did it wrong.
I just wanted to add.
Again, there's, there's, but they're not mentioned, though. It's May, it's also in May, Jewish.
Thank you.
I wrote it down, I just, yeah, I saw the light, I was trying to stay with it, and I know I go over. I was a little nervous. Right. Thank you.
My name's Bob, first borough. During the April 28 Equity Roundtable, Rob Flowers went over the Equity Roundtable discussion points. During the roundtable, I found it interesting that the links he was clicking on in the discussion points were topics that were rather generic, very safe links to click on, click on. This is stark contrast to the links, topics, and videos he went through in previous roundtables. What is also interesting is the links that he chose to gloss over or skip that were on the discussion points. For example, the PDE Equity Inclusion link redirects you to the Equity Inclusion page, to the Pennsylvania Department of Education website. The webpage includes links to resources on topics including the following: Gender and gender identity, LGBTQ, racial and ethnic, ethnic identity. When I cut down racial and ethnic identity, there are links to articles from critical race theory activists and authors, including this is White Privilege: Unpacking the Invisible Backpack. White privilege is a term used by critical race theory advocates that they would define as invisible systems that give dominance to white people. CRT will label all whites as privileged despite life circumstances that show otherwise. Other proponents of CRT like Tendecita, Tendecit, Coates, and Julie Olsen Edwards also linked on this page. Coates is a proponent of the 1619 Project. 1619 Project, which is historically, is not historically supported, is an example of CRT that seeks to undermine the progress that America has made to fulfill its founding ideas. Going back to the Equity Inclusion page and clicking on the link for gender and gender identity is a list of gender diversity words you should know. These words included, include the following: assigned gender, birth sex, birth sex, cisgender, gender queer, gender identity, and preferred personal pronouns. Why are these themes being pushed onto the students? This is also, there is also a link on this page for Gender Spectrum from Learning from Justice. Learning from Justice is a far-left wing group that was founded by the hate-based scammer named Southern Poverty Law Center in 1991. The Gender Spectrum article is a disgusting attempt to groom children into disturbing, disturbing idea that gender is assigned. to groom children into disturbing, disturbing idea that gender is assigned at birth. These, that there is no scientific basis for two genders. Schools should not be pushing this destructive idea onto the students. This nonsense is grooming. Please look into some of these links that are on Equity Roundtable discussion points for April. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie Ebony. I wasn't sure if I would say speak, but I decided to talk about what we discussed at the Equity Roundtable. It was a different atmosphere during the meeting, so it was very interesting. But there was a staff member on the call and she was boasting about advocating of the normalization of gender dysphoria is what they call today, but in 2014 it was dysmorphia. And another child, she said it was imperative to be in position to witness a child fight his voice. At Daniel Boone, the district advocates that all students with a belief system outside of gender identity politics should comply despite a student's personal convictions. We saw polls and snapchats amongst middle school students, it was an event in a cafeteria. And the students were in support of one kid who was a victim of a trans student and other students who support this trans child. The kid was accused of being transphobic and he actually received the most votes because the student body believed that he didn't do anything wrong. I'm not really sure what was actually going on, but it was going back and forth on snapchats. If you call gender transition what it really is, not using the newly formed language, it appears that Daniel Boone and some of the staff support pubescent genital mutilation surgery. This concept disregards the Muslim, Hebrew, Catholic and Christian faiths and that each individual is made in the image of God. The students who have these faiths do not agree with this, yet we have a program that claims to be inclusive, however, it's only inclusive as long as the students agree with what Daniel Boone and society thinks moral despite religious convictions. I'm not advocating the disrespect of students who struggle with gender identity, but to offer others the same respect with different belief systems. America is not innocent of atrocities, but those of us who are still alive can right the wrongs of teaching our students the truth. There is freedom, forgiveness and love in truth. Jesus said he is the way, the truth and the life. The Bible says, "My people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face; I will hear from them and I will heal their land." If we as a district own our wrongdoing, repent and pray, our kids will have a fighting chance. We must be honest to children, teach them what is love, hold them accountable for what acts taken with discipline and correction and the next generation will have a fighting chance.
Gretchen Markle, Birdsboro. I really didn't prepare anything tonight, but I do have a couple comments. The kids were talking about safe space. Now, I'm in the working room, I worked at a pharmacy company and they had like a wellness room where you could just go in for a couple minutes. But I just questioned what could happen with kids as opposed to adults that you would go in and just have a couple minutes. You know, I kind of think that would be a good idea, but again, I think there's realities with that. Dr. Puber, I was wondering, you give an update? So if, if, if our school is this bad, as they're saying, can you give updates as to how many racist things happen from like in between, you know, the meetings? That would be really helpful, so we can really see. Now, last week I got up here and I was feeling loved and just, you know, Easter in my heart and saying that we, you know, to do something, pick me up, do something. And I don't hate to help these kids, but they're not, they're just bitching. They're not giving a solution to what the issues are. And I'd like to see that. I would honestly like to see that because to me, again, I think that Mr. Flowers is grooming these kids. We came in a couple weeks ago and we were pushing back on CRT and then a couple weeks later and it's the same kids. Racism does not happen to men in this school. And it's the same kids. And God bless you, I'm sorry, you know, if, you know, I would never want to see anybody hurt or criticized again, but we need to come together and come with a solution and we will work with you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm in Sydney, if you all have seen here at Daniel Boone High School. And I'm going to be honest, I have nothing to say about it, so I'm just going to say what I think. So first of all, I want to address, just in general, I want to say that we do offer solutions as you, as somebody called, we are quite a bit bitching, but honestly, yeah, that's what we're doing because we're not getting listened to. We're offering these solutions, we're offering these resources that you guys can do for us students, however, you're not taking action. We tell you guys to make these safe spaces for us. We tell you guys to listen to us. We go to these board meetings and we speak whatever, we don't have to be here. We're giving up our time to be here and we have work, we have work to do. We have other responsibilities, but we give up our time to be here because we want to see change in this school, however, nothing is happening. And it hurts us, it really does. I, I really don't know what else to say, but I, listen to us. I'm sure our voices actually take what we say and do something, isn't it? At this time, I'm being repetitive, but I really don't know what else to say. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rose, I'm from Birdsboro. I'm here tonight just to say that I'm in support of the students that are here and hope we can continue to work to find some resolutions to the problems that they have. I also want to speak up about Rob Flowers. I have worked with Rob, I have attended all of his Equity Roundtables. I think that what he brings to Daniel Boone is extremely important and it needs to be listened to and we all need to move in that direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion, George? Second? Okay. We're joined, thank you, everyone.